Action on this.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second in discussion. All those in favor? Let's vote. Adjustments to the agenda.
I have nothing, sir.
Public comment. Please state your name and the town you are from if you are not from Oxford. Anyone?
We still have a hole at the end of the moonlight lane, I think they call it. And they never put cones up. Just keeps getting bigger.
I will ball up again.
Anybody else? Closed public comment. Business items review and approvals. Marijuana facility license application renewal for mains alternative care in Oxford. C L C.
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second in discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Dismissed? Five point two, review approved marijuana facility licensing application renewal for faded CCLC doing business as faded Canada's company.
Same old.
Second.
Motion and a second in discussion. All those in favor? Vote. Five point three, accept donation from Oxford Casino to the Police Department Reserve for featured K nine program.
Same old.
Second.
Motion and a second in discussion for the board. We have representatives from the casino here, they'd like to.
On behalf of the casino, I'm very thrilled to be able to donate $4,000 towards the building of the K nine program.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we take it back?
Yes.
I think it'd be a nice thing, make a picture of him.
I think that'd be order.
Yeah.
We can do that after.
Sure.
Oh, okay. Do you want to do it now, so you're not saying the whole thing? Yeah, I'll do that. And I'll get out of the way. All right. I can handle it.
I'm just like wondering why you look like you're happy about it.
They all look happy. We don't have a coffee.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We had motion second, all those in favor? Vote. Five point four, MSAB seventeen superintendent Heather Manchester school update.
Should I come up there, should I stay back here?
Wherever you feel comfortable and people can hear you.
Sure, I have a loud voice. So you could find me tonight, thank you so much for coming, it's budget time, so I understand you have some questions. I talked to Adam today. I'd like to also welcome our board members from Oxford who joined me tonight, and our board chair, Tori Ripley, so they've come along as well. So we're in the budget season, our budget forum is Wednesday through Tuesday, April 6th at the Oxford High School Forum. I understand you have some questions this morning? Or what would you like me to talk about?
So I'll open this up to the board, because I have attended the last couple meetings, very good presentation.
Thank you very much.
Any board members?
Yeah, I'm curious, what? Can you tell me a little bit about the closing of the school in West Paris? Because I get a lot of people asking me questions about, I mean, I just wonder how all of a sudden comes so quick.
Absolutely, sure. So, so as part of our school construction process that we have, as required by the state, we had to do an evaluation of all of our elementary school buildings. So we contracted with architects to do those studies. And what we found, the aggregate school was completely empty thoughts, and there were likely safety issues in the building. And in our public meeting, which the architects came because they wanted to make their statements in public to say that the building has significant safety issues. It was determined that we did take it in safety for kids to be in the building.
But did they, did they do this testing or whatever before school started, or right in the middle of the school year?
No, they did it in the, they viewed all the schools in the summer and then they take the, they took about four months to write the report.
Just seem different. Any other, I've had some people question of me on your policy for, you know, different things that you need. Is there any truth to the story that the addition to the school in Otis Field was done and it didn't go up to bid?
That is not my, no, that is not your, Kerry, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
So initially, it was determined that we needed to replace the portable that was there. So we did a bunch of searching around to see whether any used portables we could buy, or, you know, what was the route we were going to go. They did, they went out to bid, or requested, they went out for proposals trying to find companies who could provide a portable and a quote for a portable. And it was, of course, during the pandemic, so the only person still doing portables, because all the other housing manufacturers, they were no longer doing portables because they were so far behind on houses, was Skia. So they, they were the only one that would provide us the quote for the portable. So then we went to the board and we asked for the money for the portable on a three-year lease purchase. When we received that, by the time we received it, the law had changed about the square footage, and we made a fire suppression system. So now, because it was over nine hundred square feet or a thousand square feet, we had to have a fire suppression system, which we didn't know at the time that we ordered the portable. So then we had to turn around and then go out to quote to our fire suppression system. So that's why people were thinking that we didn't do it right, because that what, we didn't ask for fire suppression system, we didn't, we didn't need one when we initially started the process. But then it's totally burnt, we're watching it.
But as far as the portable classroom, that went through a good process?
Yes, definitely went out, closed our proposals for it.
Good, well, I've had people asking them questions, but I didn't have a good answer.
Thanks for asking, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
So is it the preliminary numbers we got, is that what it's going to be?
Well, that's what we're asking the voters for.
Oh, no, I mean, is there any room more in there, or is that?
I'm sorry, what was the last question?
The number that you gave is a pretty sizable increase.
It is.
I mean, is nothing else that could be shrunk down at all with that?
So what I'm going to tell you is that we have some significant issues that we have not been funding with our buildings. And so our facilities costs are actually part of the steepest part of the increase. So facilities and also technology infrastructure. We've got end-of-life servers, we've got phones that are end-of-life, we've got some significant things to overcome. We also have an additional warrant for $2 million to start a capital reserve account for the district. We do not have a capital reserve account, which is kind of your planning ahead for maintenance on your buildings. And we've got some significant issues to make up for. We're anticipating about $22 million over the next 10 years in deferred maintenance costs. So we're trying to start a capital reserve so that we can be proactive rather than reactive.
One more question?
Yeah.
Electric tool buses, what, how did that, did we end up getting some of them, or we didn't get them?
We applied for grants and we haven't heard to God.
Good, don't give them.
Okay, thank you for that feedback.
Colby? Sharon? Scott?
And anytime you have a question, you're hearing stuff, feel free to call. You know, you can reach out to your Adam, or if you want to call me directly, I'm happy to talk to you, so no problem there.
So the only question I add, we probably use some meetings before the school board budget. Obviously, the school board itself works on the budget before they voted the last meeting. If we could somehow have better notice, or have this type of interaction before it goes to the school board with any of the towns, and I don't mind doing it with other towns, have one meeting. It would probably be a big help.
Yeah, we're trying to, every year we're trying to move it back a little bit in the budget process, because I recognize it was a student on the town.
Years ago, I was on the school board, actually, for nine years. And when I was on the school board, and I was chair of the budget committee, actually, for six of those years, we went to every district town and did a presentation at all of the schools with the budget. So that the people in those towns could go to a budget presentation and ask questions. The superintendent went, the school board members from those towns went, and we always had a good turnout. Is there, that might be something you might want to consider doing again, because I think it would, it would be, I think it would be good.
Yeah, so I will say, part of the reason we stopped doing that was because people were not coming. And we were going to meetings with nobody, except for maybe two or three people. And so the last two years, the budget committee has opted to have a meeting at central office, which has actually been better attended. But I think it certainly, you know, we can certainly look into that again. You know, I don't have, I don't have a problem with doing that, I just, it's hard to get people to those meetings. So, but yeah, I appreciate that feedback.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
I see that corporations might have some money for the West Paris school.
Yeah. Yeah, I wrote to the commissioner yesterday to request that she encumber those funds and tell me what I need to do.
Very good then.
Oh, yeah, that's Troy's whispering in my ear. It does come with a match, we have to provide, I believe, $240,000 to get the $480,000.
Some of that can be in kind, right?
I think so.
The commissioner should answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think a lot is unknown, and so I wrote to the commissioner to say, you know, what, what do we need to do to get this? And so I'm hoping he hears from her soon. It also is dependent on funds being available, so if they actually don't spend all the money, and you might have something to, you know, I don't know if you.
Colby was selling money, he had one of his three-way five drugs.
Yeah, and we had invited Representative Millet and Senator Bennett to our budget, where our school construction workshop. And so we were really appreciative that they came and sort of listened to some of the things that were going on.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much, thank you.
Business item five point five, election clerk appointments.
Just have a couple of additional Pam Lovely and Virginia Wilson.
Motion.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion and second in discussion. All those in favor? Let's vote. Five point six, review approved appointment of Joel Hassler to the budget committee and the store preservation committee.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Let's vote. Five point seven, review award surplus nineteen and five E one custom chassis fire apparatus grid.
Same old.
Second motion and a second discussion. Scott? Vote.
I know it's a shocker that I'm not, I'm not in favor of this whatsoever. Again, I don't think that we would review the consequences of this. In my opinion, that dropping down to just two engine companies, one being out, that leaves you a thousand gallons of water in this town. And I know, for the exception of.
Sharon.
Who lives in the Hydrate District, that would be a huge impact to people that don't live within the Hydrate District. I am one of, so I don't think that this is a good plan. What I would entertain, and if some point down the road, we want to look at this as feasibility study, if you want to swap out one of those pumpers and maybe get a hand truck that can roll out second and give you that water. Personally, that, I would entertain that, but to do away with.
All those in favor? Chief.
I hear you're concerned with Mr. Hunter. However, for example, Sunday night we had a structure fire, and only one engine from Oxford responded. The rest of our water came from mutually, so we had a tanker from Otis Field, Mechanifol's engine and a Paris engine. Mechanifol's engine and Otis Field tanker were automatic. We called for the Paris engine, and that actually happened to be around Mr. Hunter's house in that region. It wasn't fun to Hydrate District, we did have to shuttle water. Our engine six was a primary pumper. So unfortunately, we just don't have the staffing that's rolling all these engines right now, and I don't foresee it. Like everywhere, we're struggling. Even if we rolled two more trucks, you know, they would probably have taken the tower truck and, you know, the other engine, which is engine two that's front lawn. We rely on mutually now, and that's just how things work. That's why we have mutually agreements with Norway that has tanker trucks, you know. It's just how we're operating. And honestly, the fire went out just as quick with mutually water. Water is the thing, wherever it's coming from.
Any other questions?
Nope, I don't have anything to add beyond the chief's comments.
All those in favor? Close. Vote.
Four one.
Four one. Five point eight, review award surplus two thousand fourteen Ford F-150 there. This is the old, old police, old CEO.
Old everything.
Second discussion. All those in favor? Close. Vote. Five point nine, Rabbit Valley Road, future repair funding discussion.
All right, so during the last elections meeting, we had a discussion about Rabbit Valley Road adding additional funds during the, during the budget process, there was discussion about that as well, specifically going out the bond. So I spoke to the towns, the engineer that the town uses, Rob Prue from Pine Tree Engineering, and we discussed timelines and so forth. The engineer's recommendation, which I agree with, which is that at town meeting, we raise appropriate the $50,000 to do the engineering and surveying portion of the restoration plan. So if we raise appropriate at town meeting, that is done, and then when that's completed, we can put things out to bid, we can get contractors lined up. And once we have an actual price, you know, from a bid, we can then go out and get our road bond, or attempt to get our road bond at that point. So the town could look at either doing, potentially in November, we could have it as a referendum question for the bond, we could do a special town meeting along the way. Or we could even potentially next June, do the, you know, do it as a question at town meeting and already have the bid and everything all lined up, pending town meeting funding. So I think we have a lot of options. I have spoken to each of the board members individually on the phone about this. I feel like, based on those individual conversations, that we did get away from the bond right now, given the timeframes. So what I've done on the town meeting warrant, based on those conversations, is when you get to the money being set aside for road repairs, I noted that $200,000 is noted for general emergency and road repairs, and $50 is noted for the Rabbit Valley surveying engineering. That certainly can be changed if that's not agreeable to the board.
If you get that, the way you're talking or doing it, I mean, have your engineer look at it, put the bids up here, so we know what we needed for our bond. And you did do that, you say in September or November?
I was thinking November, because there'll be an election in November.
How long, if you, if you put that all, I mean, wouldn't it make sense to try to do something like that and then have it to do next year, we could do it, or you think it'll have a quicker?
He feels that if we, if it's a, if it's a, I'm not saying a rush, but he feels, he feels comfortable with that being the quickest timeline, if we put it out for vote in November. But I don't see any reason why that we can't go through the entire process. I mean, it's not unheard of to even award the bid pending town meeting approval, and then next June it's voted on at town meeting floor.
Right, and I'm just saying, some people are not going to understand that.
Yep.
You know, if we say, hey, this is Y, makes sense.
Yep. Yeah, I don't see why, you could do it either way, I think. But either way, the, the engineer was confident in saying that we're not breaking ground on this this summer. I mean, and if we do, it's going to cost more than a pretty penny at this point, so.
Do you want to motion on that?
I don't know that we necessarily, well, we probably should, because you all voted on the road bond last time. So maybe you can give clarity to the manager, and it'll go in the minutes that this is the direction you want to go.
So you're talking about getting it all ready set and then do it next town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, well, then the motion? Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion and second in discussion. I'll entertain one question from the crowd.
Thanks, I appreciate it. So I'm a resident of Rabbit Valley Road, yeah, I think you guys know that, I know. My biggest concern, I'm bad at the plan, I appreciate the plan, my concern is, it's just, why is this taking so long? Why didn't we do this last year, probably what you promised next year a couple of years ago? So, fastest we can do it. Because pushing it to next June, that's based off of this rate, seven more times, you know, they're on the gravel. And I think, I don't know how many times, I've already, I've just gotten gravel and, and, this time, I appreciate the town crew that are out there in the foreign rain, it's snowing, time happens. I think we need to be more proactive than we actually, and the faster we do it, the better. So I appreciate it, thanks.
We appreciate the bigger call, too.
The bigger caller was good, but now they're holding in. Thank you for keeping us scheduled.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Vote. Five point one oh, review approved town meeting warrant.
So if I may, so you have a copy of the town meeting warrant in front of you. One of the things I just want to note right out of the gate, I did send a quick email, because I just got ahold of this information, I was able to speak to Colby about this on the phone. LD eleven fifty-three went into law yesterday, because I think it didn't get signed by the governor, but it went through that process where it says it was a ten days, and then it automatically becomes law. So what this?
Ninety days from June.
Yes. So what this is, this is in regards to solar and solar power, and I've got a copy of it for everybody right here. Again, I just got my hands on this recently, so, here we go. If you want to take one back along, that'd be great. So what LD eleven fifty-three basically does is if, and I'm really abbreviating here, is if this, if it wasn't built before or in service by June first of this year, then it won't be eligible for the exemption unless it meets the criteria outlined in here. And one of the big things of, one of the big things is that if more than 50% of the output is going out to the grid, then it's not eligible for the exemption. So why I bring this up is we have the solar moratorium as one of the questions, or one of the, excuse me, warrant articles. I certainly don't think it hurts anything, just like Colby and I discussed earlier, to leave the warrant article on there and, you know, let things run its course, but I just wanted to make sure the board is aware of this before we move forward, so.
But I mean, they pretty much told you I can spend it, right? I mean, they're pretty much telling you in here how the game is going to be played.
Right, but a lot of this has to do with, let's say yourself, you put solar in your house. If you use, you generate so much for your electricity and your heat in your house, then anything extra can go out to be sold. But you gotta use over fifty, up to 50%, just generated on your own. And so, if you read, that's section four. It's like if you have solar on your farm, you have to use 50% of it at your own personal use before you can sell it on the grid. That's, well, it's, it really doesn't.
I mean, really, there's nothing to say about the.
If you read the whole thing, it's, it's almost like what you're generating on your own place, a lot of people do. And then you can sell the rest of it. Because it says you use solar with energy equipment, and it said use on the site where the property is located, and you have to use most of it between your heat and electricity. So I still stick up for the moratorium.
Yeah, but I mean, it really didn't get anything to do with what we were putting in the moratorium on it.
Yeah, solar farms, right. Well, no, it's.
I mean, you think, oh, we're really going to use it. Solar farms aren't using it, are they?
That's right.
So it didn't make any difference, huh?
Right.
Go forward where we work, right?
I, I believe so, but you might interpret it differently, right?
Is there some, I mean, I just got this, is there something else in there saying more? I mean, this is more of a personal thing, or a business thing, and it would be, our problem was to get the tax break on the solar farm down here by the racetrack, correct?
The main reason is that.
What does that mean?
If they put in a solar farm above a certain size, the state says the town has to give them a tax break.
Right, well, we know that now, but we didn't know it when we did it.
So that's why we're trying to put forth a moratorium, and I don't, I mean, this has a whole lot of.
I mean, the state got a lot of means to it.
The interpretation that I'm getting is that this actually does affect the commercial.
Oh, it does?
Yeah. So, but I think if.
Did you vote on this?
Yeah.
All right, let you explain it to me.
So given the fact that the board is aware of it, but given there's more discussion, maybe we should stick with the moratorium. But we made you guys aware of the fact that this came out, and we'll stick with what we were doing before, if that's comfortable to the board.
Comfortable with me.
All right.
I don't have any wish to change the town meeting warrant, but somebody else does, or.
We didn't change it, we don't need to vote on that, do we? How do you?
Just need to adopt it.
Vote to adopt the warrant.
All right, okay, yeah, the way it is.
The way it is, right.
Yeah, we're correct.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Let's vote. Thank you. Department and reports, Jack.
First of all, I thank Matt and seeing what the relationship that we have, and appreciate that, and thank you very much. Everything that we've been working on in the past couple of months has started to come forward right now. We have six O P diesel vape that's going to start tomorrow and Saturday, so we expect the population numbers to jump quite a bit in the next two days, so I think twenty-six would be pretty busy with traffic. Also Saturday, we have a 5K run that's going to be up here at the north end of town, and trying to help Kale put together the traffic details for that. Our retail thefts haven't declined at all, so that's been keeping us pretty busy also. O U I numbers are higher than they've been for a long time right now. Some of that might be due to the details that we got, and I'm appreciative for the grant that we got for those details. We got O U I, seat belt, and speed grants. The problems with these grants sometimes is they're very restrictive on the areas that we can work. So we can't go outside of those areas that have been covered, but at least it lets us have other units out there to help enforce some of the speeding problems, especially that that we've been having. So the phone calls haven't been as bad as they have been in years past, so like, it's been making a difference. Obviously, the K nine grant, we have our applicant picked out. As part of that particular grant, some people from the grant will come and also interview the applicant that we've chosen, to make sure that they're a good fit, and then we'll, we'll keep stepping forward from there. We're still working on the finances with everything, but I think in the, in the end, it's going to be very low, if any, cost of town right now, what we've got put together, so. what we've got put together, so that's kind of exciting. You would ask the last time I missed, we spoke, um, if that was gonna be a new position, it's not. It's gonna be a specialty, just like we have officers that have specialty, like field training officers or O U I instructors, so. That'll be helpful too. Gonna be doing Special Olympics like we do every year in June, that's gonna be coming up. Also, I've been talking with the track owners about in, uh, July second and third, which is a Tuesday, Wednesday, they're gonna have a three hundred lap race. Um, and from what I understand, the payout's gonna be more than the two fifty, so it's brought concerns to me. They've been kind of downplaying it a little bit, and I, I'm trying to err on the side of caution, cause I, I talked with, uh, Mike down there. I don't wanna find out the week before the straight starts, that I'm like, God, now they're gonna need, they're gonna need another dozen officers there, so. It's something that we're trying to keep an eye on and see how that goes. Truck across Maine is gonna be coming in June also, so we're gonna help them with traffic details crossing Route twenty-six and going down Route one twenty-one. And, a little bit on the side note, the windows of the public safety building, they're gonna be coming, I believe, it's May twentieth. They started doing the, uh, T R R, the installation and all that, so hopefully that will improve things with the building. It's been busy.
Are you down any officers, or?
Right now, I am full staff, thank you.
Anything else to the board?
Wouldn't you say the dates were July second and third?
Second and third, it's a Tuesday and Wednesday.
I just, yes, I heard Kyle Bush might be here.
Yeah. Yeah. That also brought, oh, I should say heightened my concerns for that. And even though it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, it's March of July, we, a lot of people have that weekend, so I think they're gonna have the numbers of people. One good thing is, though, with Mike and the track, is they, they're very, they do communicate well, so. I just have the concerns for that, that particular event.
Very good.
Thank you.
Town meeting, board.
Great, uh, just a couple of things, uh, two sixty King Street, the demolition of that location. As a refresher, the, uh, board signed a demolition order for that location, uh, earlier this year. They gave ninety days to the owner to demo the building. The demolition did not occur. So we put together an R F P to request a contractor to do the work. That's, uh, gonna be posted and it'll be out there, excuse me, posted on May first, it'll be out there for thirty days, and then that'll be brought to the board for potential award. The, also, I was approached by Bennett Property Maintenance, which is the company that was awarded the mowing contract for the fields, you know, town properties. And he is proposing, he's proposing to enter into a three-year contract with the town. His current bid price is thirty-two thousand. He's saying that he'd be willing to lock into a three-year contract if we could do forty-five thousand a year for each year, including this year. I did express to, uh, Mr. Bennett that that is over what we had budgeted this year, and as well as generally we like to go out to bid each year. But I did tell him I would present it to the board and let you guys have to think about, so.
I think we're not interested. I think we gotta put it up to bid, because what was the last bid? I mean, he, we wanted in the bid.
We did.
Up to bid, he's gonna do it for the bid that he-
He's doing it for thirty-two this year, but he's offering to do it for three years.
Three years, but he wants forty-five or forty-five.
Forty-five, no, forty-five this year, forty-five next year.
He wants to up his amount for this year, sign for three years.
Yeah, I don't think we're all doing that.
I don't advertise it for three years.
Right, plus, there was another bidder came the same night who was questioning. So, if he doesn't have an opportunity to bid on a three-year contract.
I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Alright, and then I think that answers that, and then, um, another thing, I sent a, sent some information. So the T L E A reached out to me, and there we're requesting a, a porta potty to be put at the boat launch on Route one twenty-one. I reached out to the company that we often use for porta potties here. Uh, they thought I said, given the location near the water, it's unattended, and they gave me a laundry list that they are not interested in putting a porta potty there. So, I am preparing to respond back to T L E A and let them know that that is the case. Um, but again, I wanted to give the board the opportunity to chime in, I'm assuming we're all on the same page that we will not be doing that. And then, uh, the police chief stole my thunder, I was gonna remind folks about five K this weekend as well. So, that's all that I have.
Not interested.
No?
But I have to do it.
Selecting items, we have one on the agenda. What I can say is that I'm glad that Jim and his crew were able to get up and find those culverts in the road going down towards Davy's Corner. I see all the rain we've been having now, it's been raining, it's been washing up the side of roads.
I don't think that's what we're meant to do.
No.
The item is on the agenda.
Oh, I didn't want to go on.
Town report.
I didn't get that. I just looked at selectmen's items.
And that is, what is our absolute drop dead last day, you need to know? Today. Try again.
We've gotta send the report to the printers by, I think, Monday the latest, and if we don't get it to by the Monday, then we may not get it. Not in time, probably.
We've already done it to the oldest person in the town, right? I'm doing it.
I mean, we've been talking about this for like, three months, and we haven't come up with anybody yet, I think we're gonna lose-
I don't see a motion, if anybody has one.
I had a problem with that one too.
Yeah, you'd have a problem with?
No, I haven't, I haven't been very, I haven't come up with anybody new.
So rather than not doing one, I certainly, I mean, we, we do have some departments, road crew, road crew in particular, with the number of storms we've had, uh, and I don't wanna take away anything else from any of the other departments, cause they're great. Um, but the, the storms that they've cleaned up short notice, extra hours, um, and it was part of their job, but I do think that they've gone above and beyond to avoid even that, so should anybody choose to do so.
Maybe a recognition, if you will, of one of the dedication?
Yeah.
You gonna make that motion?
Uh, sure.
I was like, discussion?
It's been seconded?
Scott, uh, seconded.
Okay, so, just a recognition, right?
All votes in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Time runs. Thank you, folks, for the board part where we just signed on. No, I think it's two separate, two separate things.
Okay.
Keep the one part, but the other part by itself, right? I wouldn't be surprised if it was two alone by itself, passing statute. How's it going? Rainey, how are you? I remember you.
Adam Garros. To answer your question, you were talking about the one I just talked about. Yeah, I mean, sorry, four nine, four nine million without the cap, the five point three with the cap. And that's what the town's appropriation goes, that's one of six hundred thousand, that's what it's out for, cap, so. That answers your question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I gave them the other stuff assigned. That's the solar, the solar one. The warrant, solar taken out, they've got the regular. We'll make sure they don't get a problem. Yellow one. Yeah, that's the one with appointments and stuff. You did, but I took it off of your stack, so it was in the mix in, that's why. No, man.
And we appreciate the conference, I should tell you. This is, I mean, it made today, in order, it's like, it's part of, um, it's part of the, of the marijuana.
It shows that, I mean, it was too thick to stay a port from, so it's part of the, uh-
It's not full on money, but they quite chose the way it was at the time. They're intended to be, to help.
Yeah, but it just puts, yeah, the other side is dry, and the art got all of it, so definitely just have it there.
You know what I'm saying, this is saying, so I'm saying.
Boy, it's like, it's a movie. Wow.
So, the issue of it.
It needs to come here, it's not, that's the door we came in, but we're not going out, I mean, I know it's been a long wake-up meeting, but-
I mean, that's, that lies, it's been verified. There would be one thing if we could put the following end zone aside, but it can't.
One more.
Thank you, thank you. Missed them all.
I've mentioned that quietly, if you just did, if we were to solve our own problem.
Boy, I, I didn't know what the, huh? I could've gone on, but I think you're the only one. Do you see much of that?
You need that, that's what we basically just did.
Oh, I would think so.
Worked by the cell to try to get that, uh, they, they, they have machines, they have their room.
She is finding out where they, they sold right on the, let it go online. This project, this is how much was funded by the state, this is funded by the state. Oh, exactly, it's, is that, the, 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 the payers pay- the debt service is three, thirty-two thousand a year for twenty years, how much is that? Times four, so, so I think that's what, just by doing that simple, that's what the local share. It wasn't the, like, the one that's cured, it was, by the way, frigging boost, but there's that, sure, by me, yeah. So, yeah, that's, that's the argument to have, is come, when they say, well, this is paid, or you go, Paris. You get, this is paid, this is paid.
Steak impacts, a whole percent of it.
Or whatever, or whatever, legislation on whether it's- But she, she just looked at it, she said that-
Do you wanna come in?
She's at the same deal.
It's best if you call her, if you're gonna be making a special trip down. Sometimes she's out.
Wrong fitting, she says it's worth eighty thousand, she says it's worth two hundred if you want it.
And I called and said, you have the number that dawn again.
Michelle, I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Have a good night.
I make a motion, assign warrants, ninety-one, ninety-three, ninety-four.
Okay.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor. Vote.
Jesus, just clear it up quick.
The sun came out, I guess, I don't know.
What, what were the boys from West Paris, why did they?
So, the people from West Paris, and, and we've had, like, they had another meeting at the district office, um, about the, no, actually, it was here, at the school the other night, um, about consolidation and different options of what they can do. What I took from that is the state has two schools on the list that they will support, both in Osford Hills. There's more, but two for Osford Hills, a middle school, and they want, I believe, one of the requirements of that is the middle school to become a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, which seventy percent of the schools in the country are sixth, seventh, and eighth middle schools. And the second school would be a consolidated elementary school, to be determined, um, location, but a couple of the other town schools go away or shrink in size. West Paris being one, well, West Paris has already gone away, they're not in there right now.
Well, no, I'm sure they want one.
They don't wanna lose their school. And I don't, I would bet that the majority of people in West Paris don't wanna lose their school. However, my opinion would be, the majority of the taxpayers in the other seven- However, my opinion would be the majority of the taxpayers in the other seven towns don't wanna pay for a new elementary school in West Paris unless the state's gonna kick in a substantial amount, which is what they did in Paris, which is what they did in Norway, I mean, not Hebrew. So if it comes down to a district-wide vote, keep Paris, do away with Agnes Brady, build a new school in Paris, or are they going to this consolidated plan? They're they're trying to get people in all the other towns up in arms about not doing away with their school or not consolidating.
But I mean.
In one of the smaller schools.
Well, no, I get it, but what I'm saying is maybe the, you know, when they close the thing down, some, somebody ought to have been thinking here a little bit because in two days, if you could put them all somewhere else, everything goes awfully out of, hey, do we need that school?
Right.
Especially when they want the extra money that they want, right? Am I wrong thinking that? Huh?
I would say we don't need that school, but the people in Paris want, West Paris want their school. And I don't blame them for that. I don't blame, if they were gonna do away with Oxford's school and build a consolidated school in Norway, you know, the people in Oxford probably would be enough for.
Who? Yes, as long as everybody doesn't mind, keep on paying, football on every corner.
But that's just it, if you, the way it sounds, if they don't do a consolidated elementary school, the state's not gonna fund it and all the local share, all the cost of a new school in West Paris will be on the local taxpayers. So twenty, probably twenty, twenty-five million to build the elementary school there.
The fact that they don't have water. That's gonna be a big expense, went and done with that one.
So, that's what, that's the purpose of them showing up and if you go to any of the other meetings, they got some more of those. It's a good meeting to go see the plans. Uh, they're doing it two or three more times in other towns, I don't remember which nights they are, but.
So the one they did last week was in Oxford?
It was at our our elementary school. And this question people, but as much as we have the time, we can go with a whole new, a lot of more school people.
How is this advertised, I didn't know far.
Um, they put stuff on Facebook, um, I don't know where else, I mean, how to get papers on, it was in the paper. I see it on Facebook, this this new thing that they're, so they've called. The West Paris Board has worked with South Paris, so they're calling a meeting in South Paris next week to discuss this and they're trying to get as much support as they can from other towns to, so their elementary school doesn't go.
I did hear about this plan and I do think it's a really good plan, I mean, I haven't been to one of the meetings, but.
To twenty, so one school, if one elementary school is twenty-something million dollars, then the local taxpayers gotta pay for it. Or a consolidated elementary school is probably gonna be, you know, thirty or forty million dollars, but the state's gonna pick up vast majority of it. For me, anybody that votes with a pocketbook is a no brainer. But I don't, like, I'm trying to find out right now what funds were used to build Paris, that's the newest school they built. The vast majority of it was state work, not local tax work. So when they come back and try to say, you know, the whole district took in, put in their share to build Paris Elementary, we did, but it was a very small portion of that school cost, it wasn't the majority of it was the state. I I just don't, I don't think people in other towns are gonna vote to pay for a twenty-five million dollar school in West Paris. West Paris might vote for it all day, probably will, but we'll just keep stumping for it.
The West Paris thing that Dana's talking about is the thirteenth at the Paris Fire. I sent you an email and I also asked the Debra, I think it is, the secretary or administrator over there.
Administrator.
That to add the board selection to their mailing list when they send out the emails.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I forgot one today about the school board meeting.
Yep, cause I asked her. She's like the administrative assistant or something.
This time. Well, I know Carrie, Carrie's the finance person. Listen, I think that'll allow a profile to try to build a new elementary school in West Paris. Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Turn, pull it in? That just, I would use it. So you're gonna try to get it. Even more of an American. Yeah. And you didn't, I didn't see it.